Good evening. The time is six thirty-five P M. I'd like to call to meeting, uh, to order the special meeting of the, uh, common council for, uh, this January, uh, February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. Um, Ms. Dixon, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Burnett.
President.
Mr. Goldstein.
Here.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Mr. Seed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Murray. Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton. Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Ms. Mary. And Mr. Sutton. We ha- we have thirteen. We have a quorum.
Thank you, Ms. Dixon. Uh, the item on the agenda this evening is, uh, the presentation by Mr. Ellis of the, uh, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Uh, we have also, uh, Mr. Dakowitz is with us, uh, for anybody that has any questions. Uh, just to begin, as, um, I always state, it's always, uh, it is and always has been, um, my position that we do everything we can to keep our, uh, budget, uh, as low as possible so that we do not overtax the citizens of our, uh, wonderful city. I know we've been working extremely hard over the past couple of weeks to try to get the numbers right and get everything done so that we can make a, uh, a presentation that, uh, uh, we can do this evening. So, uh, again, we want to work together. This is not the final budget. The numbers or the information you'll be receiving tonight is a work in progress and we will continue, uh, to work to, uh, get the numbers, uh, with a fair, uh, budget that will give the citizens of Norwalk the services they need while, uh, being fair and, uh, to all. So, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Burnett, I know this is under the finance committee. Did you have any comments you wish to make?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Not, not at this time. As you said, this is a work in progress. This is our first view for the council of the recommended operating budget. So looking forward to seeing the presentation and we'll have several meetings going forward from here.
And, uh, just a correction, it's the twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right.
No. Uh, Mr. Ellis.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks, uh, thanks for having me. Um, as the mayor said, I will, I will echo his comments. This is the first pass and, and, uh, this could still change, uh, significantly. Um, but we thought it important to get, uh, get the numbers in front of you that we have at this point in the process, uh, and let you know what our recommendations are as we, as we move forward. Um, so I will share my screen for the presentation. Everybody see it?
Yeah.
All right. So this is the twenty-four, twenty-five, uh, recommended operating budget for the city this year. Um, just, uh, a brief introduction and what we're going to cover this evening, the budget process, a, a, a high level look as well as the calendar, where we are in the calendar and what's remaining. Recommended operating budget for both the city and Norwalk Public Schools. Um, and then we'll talk briefly on the COVID at ARPA funds. I know we've done this in the past, uh, for the past several years. But as that wraps up, I just wanted to highlight, uh, what we, what the city received and where we stand in that process. And the, uh, recommended operating budget by city department or by division as, as we call it. And then the unrestricted unassigned fund balance, what we also call, uh, the rainy day fund. Where we stand with that now, where we s- where we have stood with it historically, and then a very brief conclusion. So recommend, uh, sorry, the recommended budget, uh, process is, uh, it's really in my mind twelve months, but officially it's about a nine, nine to ten month process. Um, so we start back in, uh, October with the pro forma, uh, requests from the individual divisions. And they submit everything. Uh, over the course of December, we meet with all the individual departments to review all of their requests, uh, and address any significant variances that they have from, from previous year. Uh, and last night was the first public release of the mayor's recommended budget. And we are here with the, at the special committee meeting, uh, upcoming on Thursday is a, is a first public hearing where we hear resident concerns and opinions on, on where we are in the process so far. Uh, and then we move through, uh, a variety of other, um, meetings, including, uh, the B E T meeting with each of the individual departments, uh, to address their requests again, our recommendations and any further adjustments that they would like to make. Uh, the B E T public hearing on March twentieth. And then it moves through, uh, the common council where the final budget cap is set on April ninth and is, as is tradition, the B E T makes the final vote on the first Monday in May this year. That happens to be May sixth.
Uh, Tom, if I can just make one correction, uh, because it's important for the public to know, the finance committee public hearing was moved from February twenty-second to February fifteenth. So it will take place this coming Thursday. Um, and, and we moved that, uh, date to, uh, uh, because the normal public schools will be out of session, parents might be away, uh, so we wanted to make sure they had an opportunity to voice their, uh, comments related to the budget. So again, the finance committee public hearing will be this Thursday, uh, February, February fifteenth. Thank you.
So I was right. The slide was wrong. Right? Um, okay. So, uh, coming up next, uh, historical allocation of local tax dollars. So I know this chart, uh, has quite a bit of data on it. Goes all the way back to fiscal year two thousand eighteen. But what we want to focus on right here is the recommended budget for twenty-four and twenty-five. Uh, this basically talks about the in-kind services, things like legal services that our corporate council provides for the public school system, uh, a handful of finance functions or, or any of the departments that perform duties uh, on a regular basis for the Board of Ed. Um, so that just, this is just showing you all the breakout on that. But what I think is critical on this slide is in the, in the lower right-hand corner where you can basically see historically, it's about a forty, sixty percent, forty, sixty split between the city of Norwalk at forty percent and Board of Ed at sixty percent. That has been very consistent over the years. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on. Uh, as I mentioned, uh, COVID and ARPA reimbursements, the city got a total of thirty-nine million, uh, allocated to, uh, to us. That is all committed at this point. And what I mean by that, every division has their allotment. They are in various stages of contracts and purchase orders in terms of using that money. So we really don't have anything left, uh, to spend in that arena. And it's key to mention because it's over. Um, this, uh, the ARPA funds, uh, at least on the city side, really helped take some pressure off some of the, uh, capital projects that we had out there that, uh, would have been funded by the city, but we were able to do, uh, to use, uh, ARPA funds with. So, um, the point being that this, this has come to an end. So, uh, the capital, uh, capital projects will, will have to, uh, account for that going forward.
Uh, excuse me, can I just interrupt? Um, Tom, would you mind terribly, uh, share, uh, uh, making that full screen? It's a little difficult to see.
I don't know if this is gonna go to, um, did that make it bigger?
No.
Um.
Slideshow maybe?
Yeah, no, I did that, but it, you got, I got two monitors and then it pops up on the other monitor.
All right. It is what it is. I just thought I'd ask. Thank you.
Uh, I was practicing that earlier and I didn't, uh, I wasn't able to do that. So, um, so COVID and ARPA reimbursements, key to note here, um, end of December of this year, everything has to be completely committed, contracted. Uh, but we do have until the end of December of twenty-six to cut the last check. So as long as we finish in time, give, uh, accounts payable, plenty of time to pay the vendors, we should be all set and, um, this is a good thing because, uh, not all the municipalities in the area have committed to spending their money and some are struggling to spend their money. But, uh, but we've done a good job of making, making commitments and putting the right money in the right places. All right. And on to the recommended budget. So we are recommending, uh, that the Board of Education receives an increase of ten point two million dollars or four and a half percent over last year's amount of two twenty-six. So that brings their total recommended amount this year to two hundred thirty-seven million. Um, percentage-wise, very similar on this, on the city side, four point four six percent, which equates to eight point one million and that is an, uh, over last year's one million, I'm sorry, one hundred ninety-seven million. That brings us to two hundred six million. So very, very fair and, and equitable, uh, on the recommendations, uh, on, on the city and Board of Ed side. And then how does, uh, how does the city side break down by division? So this is sorted sequentially by the recommended, this column right here for fiscal year twenty-five. Our biggest component is debt service uh, at forty-two million, um, which comes out to about a two point two million dollar increase over the previous year. And that works out to a five and a half percent, uh, increase. Uh, one thing I will mention is at the beginning of this process, back in October, the mayor had recommended to to divisions to get to three percent increases. Um, so you'll see over here that, uh, some were able to, some were not, but I'll just touch on some of the major ones here. Uh, Public Works came in at three point two percent. Um, pretty good. Police Department, one of the biggest, well, actually the, the two biggest, uh, divisions in the city, uh, both came in very close to three percent, if not on it. Employee benefits is actually down a little bit, one point seven million. We're realizing some savings on, uh, healthcare uh, and our actual so far this year are running under target. So we trimmed, uh, we trimmed the contribution on the health benefits just a bit for next year. Fire department coming in at three point one percent. And one thing I should, I should mention, uh, is that in the original requests, the citywide, uh, total headcount request was eighteen. It's eighteen new positions that people had asked for. Given what the numbers looked like with the requested numbers, uh, the decision was made to add zero heads. So everything you see here is no headcount adds. Um, pension plans, twelve point four percent. This is a pretty significant one, two point two million dollars. OPEB, uh, you'll recall, we had a pretty significant savings last year in our OPEB, but not enjoying that this year. Uh, pensions again, and we have no flexibility on what we put into the pensions and OPEB. Um, from a broader scale, we're fortunate that the, our, our, both our pension and OPEB are not quite fully funded, but our percentage is as high as anybody else in the state. And that helps to contribute to our triple A bond rating every year. So we want to maintain those high, uh, high contribution percentages. Community services, four point six percent, about, about a half a million dollars. Finance is at six point seven percent, largely due to, um, cybersecurity insurance. Everybody knows about hacking and the malware and and phishing and all that stuff. Joyce does a tremendous job in training, training the city staff um, to look out for these things and keep an eye out for it. But, um, we have to have cyber insurance. That is a, uh, an efficiency study recommendation as well as software improvements and hardware. Um, so those make up the bulk of the finance to drive it, uh, in three percent. Economic and community development of three hundred thirteen thousand or about six percent, uh, that is skewed slightly because they took over, uh, some effort from the public works area. So when you take that amount of money out of public works and you put it into economic and community development, the year-over-year for economic and community development looks a little bit higher. Corporation council is okay, three point one percent. Contingency is another one of our big ones, up over a hundred percent at one point eight million. So as you most likely know, the city is going through contract negotiations with all, I always forget whether it's seven or eight unions that we have. They expire on June thirtieth of this year. So we have it in allocation in there to account for any increases, uh, that are negotiated. We don't know what that will be. We don't know when that will be. Uh, for the last four years, the increases have been two point three five percent for all of the unions. If it happens to come in at that, that's a tremendous savings for us, but we're not banking on that, given, given what other municipalities have seen and what some, uh, industry, uh, in the private sector has seen. Uh, grants are flat, uh, chief of staff, um, it's up seventeen percent, about a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Um, I don't know if you folks recall, but last year there were several headcount ads that were approved by the B E T with the caveat that they only be hired after January first. So instead of giving, hiring somebody at a hundred thousand for the full year, the way we adjusted the budget was to say, okay, you can have fifty for half a year. So when you take that, take that fifty thousand dollars from last year's budget and now they're full-time and they're on board, that year-over-year comparison, again, skews the percentage slightly. So that, uh, is the main driver in the, um, chief of staff. Human resources, okay, three percent. Um, town clerk, registrar of voters, uh, not a tremendous amount of money in either one of those, uh, and really everything going down the line is relatively small, um, except for the percentage on the office of the mayor. Similar situation, they just brought on board and a, a full-time assistant city clerk to act as a liaison and an assistant for the common council. We had to do that. That's a charter mandate. Uh, and then legislative is up fifty-seven percent, but it's only ten thousand dollars. And that's for training for the common council, for the new common council members. So overall, we're four point five percent. Same with the Board of Ed, the blended rate, four point five percent. Lot to chew on. Any questions or I can give you a moment here if you, if you'd like.
Yes, Tom, I had a question on the, on the pensions. Is that, um, the correction, that correction of the nine million dollars that was, uh, that we had last year?
Yeah, partially. Yeah. So it's basically come back. I, I think the recommendation was, uh, I don't, I don't remember offhand, but certainly that savings, recall that we had eleven in there and it came down to two. Um, we do not have that luxury this year.
Okay. And one other question on, on the headcount, you said the headcount is flat. Um, are we a hundred percent staffed or were there any vacancies in that headcount?
Uh, no, those were new ads. So we, we include vacancies in our budget planning at, at the regular, at the regular midpoint salary. So these were, let's say our headcount is, I want to say it's about six fifty right now. So had we granted all the headcounts, headcount requests, we would be at six sixty-eight by the end of next year. So this is keeping us at six fifty.
Okay. So we actually have six fifty employees.
Yes.
Okay. There's no vacancies.
Mr. Burnett?
No, there are, there are some.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mayor. Um, u- under, uh, finance, uh, you indicated that that increase um, re- reflects the, um, cybersecurity insurance, that that also include the, the potential for a cybersecurity officer?
Uh, no. I, I, we took that out when we were reducing and making our recommendations. So we ate, we, the re- the original request was a hundred sixty thousand, sub- hundred sixty-seven thousand, which I believe was what it was last year, but we took that out.
Okay. Thank you. And, and just one other question, which goes back to the ARPA slide. Uh, you mentioned that we've spent all of our ARPA uh, amount. Um, I believe we've allocated all of our ARPA dollars, but we haven't actually spent them yet.
Right.
I, I was, uh, my intent was that we've allocated it to the various divisions. La- Lamond has his share, Vanessa has her.
But they haven't been spent yet because just want to make sure it's clear to those listening that, you know, we, we've allocated all of the ARPA dollars. So we know how they're going to be spent, but they haven't been actually spent yet.
Correct.
Great. Thank you.
Well, Ms. McMur.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I don't expect you to have this information this evening, but I'm wondering if you can share with us the requested eighteen positions so we can take a look at that.
Yeah, I have a, I have a file that I can send.
Thank you very much.
I can rattle off a couple of them, but not all of them. Uh, better off just getting the full package.
I don't expect you to do all eighteen off of memory. Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it.
Any other further questions or comments from council members? I only see, I have a partial screen here. So if you could raise your hand, that would help me. I don't see any further questions.
Uh, Ms. Goldstein. I, I just, um, Tom or Mayor, I don't know who the best person to answer this question is. Obviously with the contingency with the ongoing labor negotiations with the various unions, when will we have an idea of ba- basically if there's a situation where we could be having to spend over the amount sort of put away in contingency this time, like what how it, what's the process by which we would be notified or sort of how does that work? Cause there's a lot of obviously variables. I realize this is not the most articulate way of asking this question, but I think you're picking up what I'm trying to ask here.
I have arranged to meet with all the union departments, all the union heads of each department to discuss, um, what their, uh, thoughts are. Uh, and also, um, Ms. Fogel is reaching out to the department heads to get their thoughts and ideas as to things they'd like to see in the upcoming negotiations. So, um, right now it's, uh, very much in the, the early stages, but we will be meeting and having those discussions and determining, um, what the unions are thinking and what the, the department heads are thinking.
So then is it fair to say that by say like the spring we'll have a much better indication of where this is going?
I, I, I think so. I think that's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and Josh, just, uh, historically, the last time they did the, uh, negotiations four years ago, I was looking back at some of the history. I believe they signed contracts in October and the retro, uh, retro pay for all the employees was distributed in November, but there's no guarantee that will happen again. They don't, they sign when they sign. They don't have to sign.
Right. I understand. Thank you.
Welcome. Anything else on this slide?
Mr. Frayer.
Um, yeah. How much of the, uh, contingency are you allocating toward the negotiation? Is it the whole one point eight?
Um, negotiations are ongoing, Jim. I, I would be, I'm, I'm hesitant to say, um, yeah. Just because negotiations haven't started, but, um, I will say that you, uh, are on the right path.
Uh, cause I'm just looking at what it was last year and, and it seems that one point five was a fairly good number. So.
That, that's usually our best part for, uh, contingent starting out of the box. So.
Okay. Good. Thanks, Tom.
Welcome.
Any further questions or comments from council members? Again, I only have a partial screen. So if you could raise your hand, that'd really help me out. Or help, raise your hand electronically. Okay. I don't see anything, um, other than what's already been asked. Um, again, uh, I want to thank, uh, Tom and Henry and Tom Livingston and, uh, we're, you know, we've had several meetings and just thank the department heads. We are looking, as, uh, Tom mentioned, I did, um, indicate that I wanted all the department heads to come in at three percent. Some of them came in higher than that, but the number, the three percent, uh, uh, the, the amount of the, above the three percent didn't amount to a significant amount. So we're going to take a look at those. Um, we did have a request for eighteen new positions. Uh, right now we've taken them all out of there because, um, uh, of the cost involved. And this has been a particularly, uh, difficult budget year. I know they say that every year, but I think this has been the most difficult. Uh, and we're, uh, putting together the final numbers and we'll come up with the final recommendations. We'll have the public hearing on Thursday night, listen to what members of, of the community has to say and, um, move forward and put together a budget that we believe is fair and equitable.
Okay, to proceed.
Mr. Burnett, do you have any final comments that you'd like to make?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, does Tom have, it looks like Tom has a couple more slides. I don't know if he's done.
Yeah, just, uh, uh,
Oh.
Yeah. Brief, brief summaries, brief summaries. Um, so the key drivers of the budget, I, I, I really just spoke to, uh, uh, decent savings on the, on the health benefits. Um, and workers comp, uh, and then our big drivers, uh, unfortunately our biggest drivers are the ones we have no control over, uh, so debt service is up two point three million and pensions up two point two million. Um, so whatever uh, adjustments we have or, or looking to do going forward are, are not, the, these are not options for, for, uh, reducing. And then, uh, a look at the rainy day fund balance, uh, last year, we put in for six million. Uh, reduction from the rainy day fund, we are recommending the same thing this year. Uh, the rainy day fund is a percentage of total general fund is, is fifteen point one percent. Slightly lower than it has been in, in the past, but the good news is it is significantly higher than the bond rating agencies look for. They really, uh, uh, like the fact that we have a healthy rainy day fund and we don't, when we have touched it, it hasn't been impactful. We've been fortunate over the years to continue with, uh, some, some strong budget performance that adds to the rainy day fund. So, uh, at present with this recommendation, it's six million. And then finally, just in conclusion, short and sweet, this is a balanced budget. It's fair. Um, I've never seen it. It's fair, four and a half percent for both city and the Board of Ed. And, uh, as evidenced by the, the headcount, uh, exercising fiscal restraint uh, as best we can. And that will do it. Um, any further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Uh, the council leadership, uh, Ms. Young, Ms. Najolski-Eichner, Ms. Dunn, uh, would you like to make any comments or have any questions?
Good. Thank you, Mayor. I, I, I just, you know, really feel like there are some positions. I hope there's one or two that we are able to, um, support at some point. Um, but I understand the restraints we're under and I appreciate all the work that goes into this. Um, but I'm hopeful that out of those twelve or so positions, there are at least one. Um, that as, as, as council and we, we might find, um, in some positions that, and some of those ask that there is a great need. And I know that you understand that, Mayor, and this is a balance. This is a challenge and how do we balance that? But there are some folks, I think, some positions that we hopefully can get funded.
Thank you.
Uh, Nora has her hand up, Mayor.
Uh, Ms. Najolski-Eichner.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, yeah, just to echo, um, uh, council president, I really want to thank, um, everyone for their work on this. I know how, how much work this is. Um, and I really want to thank all the departments for their thoughtful, um, work on this as well. Uh, I, you know, I, I think you'll hear more from the council going forward. I think we have a particular concern around, um, I T and making sure that we really, that all of our departments have the resources that they need from our I T department to be able to move their work forward. I think, you know, as the world goes more and more online, um, it really becomes increasingly pressing for us to be able to meet the technology needs of the city. Um, so I think that's a theme that you will perhaps hear more from us. Um, and I'm really looking forward um, to seeing the list of eighteen positions and kind of, um, being able to weigh in there. Um, we certainly are, you know, as we think about every year, it is, uh, really is a challenge. We want to make sure that the city remains as affordable as possible for as many of our residents as possible, while at the same time providing the services that our residents need. And so I appreciate the, the balance that you're trying to achieve here. And we really look forward to the conversation um, about, you know, whether there's some, some small shifts around there to better meet service needs, um, but also really being respectful of all of our residents and the, and the need to maintain affordability wherever we can. So thank you all.
Yeah. And Ms. Dunn and then Mr. Burnett.
Oh, hi. There you go. Um, I feel like it, for me, it's just a beginning of the process, but I really, really appreciate all the department shares coming in as close to three percent as possible. I, I understand how hard that is. Um, so kudos to the ones who are able to do that. Um, and I look forward to just looking at more in detail with some of the line item things as we go on.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, yes, this, this was a great first pass to understand where, what our posture is going forward. I think the key is that, um, the, that the public would obviously want to know the, the, the end of game, you know, what is the impact back to them in terms of, uh, a possible tax increase? And I think, as you mentioned earlier, there's more work to be done. So in, in future meetings, we'll have the necessary data points so that we can share what the actual impact will be to each household within each district as it relates to a tax increase. But this is the foundation that we start from to then build towards how does that affect each household from a tax increase? So, um, this is a great start. Um, I think it's a very, uh, Um, I think it's a very uh fair budget. It it provides funding to our school system in order for them to continue to thrive and and provide the uh first-class service that they have, we've become accustomed to. So uh hopefully, we can continue to tweak the numbers so that the impact to each household can be minimal.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. Mr. Frayer, I see you have your hand up.
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd also like to uh uh commend uh uh Tom and his team and and the rest of the department heads for coming through with um such a uh significant controlled numbers for next year. The other question I do have is that can you give us an update on where we stand on the on the grand list? And uh is that is that finished now? Are we happy with it? Are we comfortable with the numbers that we're getting out of that? And if we are, can you give us any indication whether it's up, down, flat, mixed, what?
Mr. Ellis?
Uh, yeah, so just uh on Friday, uh our assessor was able to grab the final assessment numbers. Uh, and I'm rounding a bit here, but last year, the uh grand list was about just under fifteen million, and this year it is coming in at about seven, uh about seventeen point nine million. So pretty, pretty significant increase. Um, billion, Tom? Yeah, so did I say million? Sorry.
Yeah.
Billion. Um, so uh how how that impacts uh the mill rates and the and the tax bills is we're not at that point yet. Uh, we're just finding there. There are a lot of variables that go into that, uh the the mill rate model, uh and that remains a work in progress, but um Paul Paul Gorman is expecting to sign off and submit the final numbers to the state uh sometime next week, I believe.
Do you have any idea of the eh the trend between um commercial and personal? Uh, is that, is that pretty much flat or is up down?
I, if I'm not mistaken, the appeals were still going on fairly recently. Uh, and I don't know, uh, I don't know what the last percentage was. I I do know that I believe last year it was sixty-six thirty-four. And they did incre- they did expect the residential side to increase a bit. Uh, property values on the residential side obviously have increased more um and commercial properties have stayed flat uh for the most part, so we don't, I don't have that final exact mix yet, just yet.
Okay, good, thanks, Tom. Uh, one, one, one last question. Let's go. Um, the eighteen additional heads. I know you're going to send us the list. Just give us a breakdown of of BOE versus uh the city?
That that's all city side.
Well, city.
Yeah.
All city side, okay.
Yeah.
Do you know how many increase, is there an increase, headcount increase on the BOE?
Uh, I don't know.
Okay.
I I don't think they articulated that at this point.
Okay, great, thanks.
There were some like paras. There was some in the budget that she asked for, but the budget was a lot higher, so. I think that wasn't our package.
Okay.
Any further uh questions or comments? Hey, or if there are none, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn this special meeting. Mr. Jocelyn Eichner, uh all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. We are adjourned at seven oh nine, and I will see you all at seven thirty.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good evening, everybody. It is seven thirty-one on February thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. I would like to call to order the February meeting of the Norwalk uh Common Council. Uh, Ms. Dixon, if you could please uh take, call the roll.
Mr. Burnett.
Present.
Mr. Goldstein.
Present.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Nijolski-Eichner.
Present.
Ms. Smith.
Here.
Ms. Ayers.
Present.
Ms. Thurseed.
Present.
Mr. Wiggins.
Here.
Ms. Young.
Here.
Ms. McMur.
Present.
Ms. Murray. Ms. Dunn.
Here.
Mr. Sutton.
Present.
Mr. Frayer.
Here.
Ms. Shanahan.
Here.
Fourteen, we have a quorum.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is the acceptance of the minutes of the regular meeting of January twenty-third, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. Shanahan, uh any comments or uh omissions, deletions, additions? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the minutes as submitted? Opposed? Abstentions? Ms. McMur is abstaining. And the motion carries. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is this approval of the minutes of the special meeting of January twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion? Ms. McMur, uh any additions, deletions, or omissions? Seeing none, all in favor of the minutes as submitted? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have public participation. Uh, since this is a completely uh online meeting, virtual meeting, do we have anybody in the uh public who are watching that wish to address the council?
Uh, Rick C., please state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, everyone. My name is Rick Constantini. I'm an attorney with the law firm of F L B Law. I think my client, Nick uh Wendell, um would like to speak first, if that's okay.
Uh, okay, uh who's next? Who would like to speak next to address the council?
Uh, Nick Wendell. Please state your name and your address and limit your comment to three minutes.
Counsel, can you guys hear me? Thank you for this opportunity. My name's Nick Wendell. I'm here on behalf of Sean's Lawns. I'm the vice president of operations of the company. We are located over at Two Mueller Avenue in Norwalk. Uh, just to be clear, I know we're hearing on this tonight. I know we did not comply with some of the conditions of our special use permit. And we should have, and you will hear from us on from our council on that part. I would also like it to be clear that there was a violation issued, and we did have a hearing scheduled. However, we were requesting adjournment, and then COVID hit, and we never had a response to our adjournment request. With all that being said, we would still like to fix this. We are good neighbors to everyone in our area over there on Muller Ave, Sniffin', and the other adjacent streets. You know, we go through and we plow those streets before the DPW can hit them in the early in the mornings when our trucks are leaving. Uh, we plowed the Mission Church across the street. Uh, we put up a basketball hoop for all the kids right across the street from our yard when we noticed someone hit theirs, and you know, we are part of the community over there. We employ thirty-one Norwalk residents. And, you know, we like doing good for our neighborhood over there. We like being part of the Norwalk community. And, you know, we'd like to fix this issue, and we want to be even better for Norwalk. And I'd like to have our counsel, Rick Constantini, speak also on behalf of the issue.
If we could just hold off for one minute, uh Mr. Burnett reminded me that I omitted a very, very important part of our uh monthly meeting, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance to our nation's flag. Could you please rise and join me in pledging allegiance to our nation's flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you, and I apologize for that omission. Uh, Mr. Wendell, I believe, is next. Uh, you have three minutes.
I have no more to add. Uh, counsel, I just would like to pass.
You want the council to speak now, yes. Um, who's next in line to speak?
Hey, uh Rick C., when you told me to um move on for him.
No, he's ready now, I believe.
All right. Uh, Rick C., please state your name and your address and limit your comments to three minutes.
Everyone, my name is Rick Constantini. I'm an attorney with F L B Law in West Park, Connecticut. We represent Sean Wendell and Sean's Lawns. Um, I submitted a letter today to the council, so I, everyone had a chance to to see it, and I know there's a three-minute time limit, so I'll be very succinct. As you know, Sean's Lawns is a successful bidder for the South Norwalk School project, but due to zoning violations related to his contractor's yard at Two Mueller Avenue, that bid is now in front of you tonight to be disqualified. I'm here today asking you to consider proponing a vote on this until your next scheduled meeting on the twenty-seventh. Um, my client is fully aware of the zoning issues and conservation issues affecting his property. Uh, while it's not an excuse, I think it's relevant for you to know, my client became sick with COVID and has been dealing with some very serious health issues related to COVID for some time. While none of this is an excuse, my client fully accepts responsibility for how he ended up at this at this point. I think the council should be aware of this fact before rendering a decision. The way, his obligation to get the property into compliance, and that's what he's doing. Um, now that he's worked his way back to better health, more focused on making sure the property is fully compliant uh with zoning and conservation regulations. And as such, he's proposing and committed to the following. File a zoning permit application, which is what he needs to do, um no later than Tuesday, February twentieth. Post the cash bond, five hundred thousand dollars to the city no later than Tuesday, February twentieth for completion of the work associated with the zoning permit. He'll endeavor to complete all work no later than sixty days from today. Cash bond is meant to be a good faith showing that he's very serious about correcting the issues. Uh, but it's also meant to provide protection to the city, uh if he else to do what he said he would do, which I know he won't. Uh, my understanding is that a five hundred thousand dollars is far in excess of the value of the work needs to be, actually be concluded at his property at Mueller Avenue. It's also my understanding, the difference between the bid and the next is roughly that amount. My client is proposing this number for the city will be protected either way. What my client is asking for is an opportunity to correct things. He understands it's his responsibility to make sure this property is compliant. He understands that. And he has an obligation, you have an obligation to enforce the zoning regulation, make sure the contractor's yard stay compliant. My client has already instructed his engineers to the materials for the zoning permit application, and they're working on it now. He's a lo- they're a long-time business in Norwalk, taxpayer in town, and the employee number of Norwalk resident. Like I said, he understands he has an obligation to make it right. He's committed to doing so. He's only asking that you delay the vote until your next meeting, that he can prove to you that he's a man of his word, and that you can, and then you can vote no on the disqualification. Currently, once he completes the work, and if you vote no in a couple weeks, the city will save hundreds of thousands of dollars on the project. It's my client being the lowest qualified bidder. I will be available for the remainder of the meeting if you have any specific questions for me or my client. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Constantini. Uh, any other persons wishing to address the council?
If anyone in the audience would like to speak, please raise your hand electronically. Uh, Mr. Mayor, there are not this time.
Thank you. Then I will close public participation. Next item on the agenda are resignations and appointments. We have a few resignations. We have Ava Jacobs Arts and Cultural Commission resigning. Marilyn Altman, Zoning Board of Appeals Regular is resigning. And Thomas Farkas, uh Zoning Board of Appeals Alternate is resigning. And under appointments, we have Mr. Farkas, the Zoning Board of Appeals Regular. Do I have a motion to approve his appointment? Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, just to speak briefly, Mr. Farkas, um apart from his professional life, where he's been a uh media executive at New York One, um and affiliated with the Tony Awards for, actually for a very long time. Um, he also has uh dedicated a lot of his time to serving our community um as a gallery ambassador with Maritime Aquarium, as a docent with the Lockwood Matthews Mansion, as a poll worker for our election since two thousand twenty, and uh relevant to this appointment, he's been on the Zoning Board of Appeals as an alternate from twenty twenty, from February twenty twenty-two until now, so exactly two years, and now he is getting a promotion. So uh with that, I uh support the nomination of Thomas Farkas for a uh regular position on the uh zoning board of appeals.
Thank you, Mr. Goldstein. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda, um does not appear, but usually is the mayor's comments, so I will ask, I will make a couple of comments if I can uh and if you will indulge me. Uh, first and foremost, as you know, we are studying uh celebrating Black History Month. Uh, and Black History is a very, very important part of our nation's history. So I think it's appropriate that instead of celebrating Black History Month, we all agree that it's important to celebrate Black History. Uh, we had a Pan America, a Pan African flag schedule, a raising schedule for today. Unfortunately, Mother Nature did not uh cooperate. Uh, this week, this Saturday, however, uh uh State Representative Kadim Roberts and members of the Norwalk County Council are hosting a program to highlight the incredible accomplishments of African Americans throughout uh our nation's history. It's going to take place Saturday, February seventeenth, from twelve to two P M at Beth LA ME Church. I am sure it's going to be very, very interesting and informative, and I would encourage people to attend. Uh, we also have the um uh common ca- I'm sorry, the Department of Public Works. Uh, they did a remarkable job on this snowfall. They came in last night around midnight to get prepared. They salted the roads. Uh, they did all the main roads first, uh then uh they they started on the secondary roads, and I've gotten a lot of comments about how wonderful the roads were, how quickly they were plowed, and this was a very difficult snow pl- uh snow storm because it was over a length of time, so they had to go back over and over again to uh to to uh plow those roads again. Uh, last Friday, uh the City of Norwalk, uh members of state delegation, we celebrated uh all the events that will be taking place at Freeze Parts, uh Freeze Park in Norwalk, which is right down in uh the center of Norwalk. Uh, as many people know, we've replaced uh that eyesore of a fence that was rusted. We've removed invasive trees throughout uh the uh water uh uh the shoreline. Uh, we will be announcing the groundbreaking for Wall Street Phase One very shortly, uh where we're going to be investing between state and federal and local funds, uh twenty-seven point five million dollars to make Wall Street uh the once vibrant area that it was. Um, and also, uh we'll be doing the facade repair on the Yankee Doodle Garage. Uh, I did want to open up the floor to any of our council members. I know, Mr. Burnett, uh perhaps Ms. Young, anybody that would like to uh add comments about the importance of Black History. Uh, so, Mr. Burnett, if you want to start.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, as we celebrate uh Black History Month, it is imperative to remember that Black History Month is American history. Uh, during the month of February and every month, we should continue to recognize and honor the several co- contributions and achievements have been made by Black Americans to American history, to society, to the economy, and to the American culture. Uh, this year, the national theme is African Americans and the arts, spanning visual arts, music, cultural movements, and more. Um, so we must all continue to lift up the importance of intergenerational dialogue to honor our past heroes, celebrate our current leaders and achievements, and commit ourselves to a future void of institutional barriers, which will be a positive impact to all of our lives. So thank you for the opportunity to share about Black History and our Black History Month celebration.
Thank you, Mr. Burnett. I believe, Ms. Young, uh would you like to make a comment as the council president?
So, so Mayor, I see uh uh Councilman Wiggins' hand is up. I I will yield to him.
Okay, Councilman Wiggins.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I I really appreciate your comments on when when speaking about not just this month, but you know, just thinking about Black History, because this is American history, so I really appreciate your comment on that. Um, as we, you know, this is the month that we are celebrating Black History Month. I just want to say that, you know, we have our shared issues in Norwalk regarding, you know, Black people in particular. Lee, and I think um as we continue to grow as a community, as a as a council, we should um tackle these issues heads on, head on. Um, and and really just keep in mind all of the things that um Black people, sorry, there's my kids in the background. sorry, there's my kids in the background, Black people went through throughout this country um and continue to go through. So as we continue to get stronger, this is the one of the most diverse councils since, you know, um you know, Norwalk became a city. So as we continue to grow and just think about um you know, Black people in this country, and particularly um think about ways we can fight and we can, you know, assist individuals that's historically been disenfranchised. So um once again, thank you, Mayor, yeah, um thank you all, and hopefully we can, you know, fix these the issues that's in front of us.
Thank you, Mister Wiggins. Uh any further council comments? Miss Young, did you?
So if I didn't see Nicole or Jalen, I I I I I just feel the need to say Black History is American history, and 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 we have to get to that point where we're not separating it. Um because we make history every day, and we've been doing, we all do it in our own way. So it just is we keep pushing forward. And I think if we all continue to to think that way and move that way to push forward in the best interest of everybody in this country. That's my comment.
Thank you, Miss Young. Uh any further comments? Mister Seed?
Yeah, I think this is what to highlight. A lot of times we talk about Black History, even the schools. It's highlighted um with the struggles of Black History, but um Black History, if you look at it in its totality, it's really beautiful, especially here in America. I mean, it is tragic, um and a lot of bad things, but where we come from, where we are today, and and the struggle, there's the beauty in the struggle. Um and I think it's something to be celebrated. Um and we come a long way um in this history. We're not there. We haven't arrived yet, but um I think we should celebrate the work that we made. Um like Councilman Wiggins said, I believe this is the most diverse. I think we have the most African Americans ever um on the council here in Norwalk with six. Um and I think that's something to celebrate, and I think a lot of times we focus on um the negative, but I think there's a lot of positive, um not just here in Norwalk, but a lot all over the country. Um and African Americans, and I think that if we focus on the progress, it'll give us the energy to tackle what we have ahead of us. Um so I think that we should celebrate the beauty of Black History and the beauty of the struggle of uh Black History here in America.
Thank you, Mister Seed. Miss Najolski-Eichner.
I just wanted to briefly follow up um my colleagues um to really, I think, honor and and stress this point about Black History being American history. Um there is a sense in which um I think no group has fought harder or um been a deeper believer in the promise of this country. No group has held America more accountable to the um founding language of we, the people, being able to lead this union. No group, I think, has fought harder to um to really say that we can achieve the ideals we put forward. Um and as uh Councilmember uh Seed referenced, that has led to the creation of some incredibly powerful art um that has quite literally changed the um the face of the world um. And some really powerful political movements that have quite literally changed the face of the world. Um so I I want to acknowledge um as a non-African American member of this council, um the importance of Black History Month um to the city, to this council, to the work that we do as America, to our prom- or to our striving to be the more perfect union that we um seek to be. And so I want to thank my colleagues for their remarks and pledge to work with all of you to um push uh our continued acknowledgement that we have fallen short, but we also have striven hard. Striven hard, that is a terrible phrasing. We've also done our best, and we will continue to push harder, um and I look forward to working with you on that that agenda.
Thank you, Mrs. Ayers.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I am not well. I'm under the weather at this point. Um but I felt compelled to say something. I won't be long. But I I really would like to encourage all of our citizens of our city to s- celebrate by participating in many of the different activities that will be going on or have been going on um throughout the month. For Black History, there has been events at the um library. There is an event Saturday um at Bethel A M E Church at twelve noon. There are different events that are going on, and it's great to acknowledge and say that Black History is American history, but we need to go beyond that and truly learn and embrace the history. Um too many times, we pay lip service to things, but we don't put action behind that lip service. So I would just encourage everybody, even Black people, because it's so much information to learn and so much things to be inspired by that this month you get up and you go and you teach yourself and you educate yourself and your neighbors and your friends and your family, your children about the rich culture and history of Black History. Again, I would say more, but I'm really not well right now, so I just wanted to say that point.
Thank you, Miss Ayers. I think you're entitled to a nice warm cup of tea now with lemon. Uh any other comments, further comments? Again, uh thank you all, and a reminder, this Saturday from twelve into two at uh the um Bethel A M E Church. Uh again, now um it is time for uh I will turn the floor over to our council president, Miss Young.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. So we're going to read um five, six A. The consent calendar will be read by me. I was trying to think of who it was going to be read by, but it will be read by me this time.
I think Miss Ayers was praying it wasn't her.
Well, I should have thought of her. We would have been really quick, right? So um for the consent calendar, we will start with six A Corporation Council. Authorized the to settle claim Anita Wanninger versus City of Norwalk, document number noted. Seven A one, Public Safety and General Government Committee. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all documents and agreements necessary to enter into a field trial agreement with Axon. Seven A two, authorize the chief of police James Walsh to ex- execute any and all documents, agreements, instruments, and amendments thereto, as may be necessary to implement the field trial agreement program with Axon. Seven B Recreation Parks and Cultural Affairs Committee. B one, technical correction. Authorize the purchasing agent to issue a purchase order to M E O'Brien and Sons for the sole source purchase and installation of a new playground at Brookside School, pricing from state contract noted, and an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents from the state of Connecticut B E Deep Parks Beautification Grant, number noted. The original item read as follows. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to enter into a contract with M E O. and Brian and Sons for the sole source purchase and installation of a new playground at Brookside School, pricing from state contract identified, in an amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-seven thousand four hundred twenty-five dollars and fifteen cents from the state of Connecticut Parks Beautification Grant, account number noted. Seven C, Public Works Committee. C one, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement between the City of Norwalk and Tegan Bond Inc. for Project D P W twenty twenty-four dash two on-call construction inspection observation services. The agreement is for a period of three years, billable on an hourly basis for a sum not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars annually, and then opting to extend for two additional terms of one year each, account numbers noted. Seven C two, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute the First Amendment to the August second, twenty twenty-one agreement between the City of Norwalk and Almstead Tree and Shrub Company LLC for tree removal and trimming services, where some not to exceed sixty thousand dollars, account numbers noted. C three, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a Second Amendment to the January twenty-four, twenty twenty-two agreement between the City of Norwalk and Colona Masonry Concrete and Asphalt Paving Paving LLC for project number D R G twenty twenty-one dash Dreamy Hollow Bet Brook Drainage Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Improvement, where some not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, account numbers noted. Seven C five, authorize the purchasing agent to issue an increase in purchase order to the Grosso Companies LLC for project P M twenty twenty-three dash four paving at various locations for an amount not to exceed seventy thousand dollars, account number noted. Seven C nine, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with Safety Marketing Markings LLC for project T M P twenty twenty-four dash one. Pavement marking symbols and legends at various locations for an amount not to exceed one hundred forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars, account numbers noted. Seven C ten, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement with K five Corporation for Project T M P twenty twenty-four dash one. Paving pavement marking symbols and legends at various locations for an amount not to exceed eighty thousand five hundred dollars, count numbers noted. Seven C eleven, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute a license agreement with the Connecticut Department of Transportation to install, maintain, and operate a closed-circuit television camera on the property of two South Smith Street in order to view, monitor, and collect video on the project known as Walk Railroad Bridge Replacement. Seven D one, I'm sorry, seven D one B. Authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an amendment to the agreement with Newfield Construction Group LLC as the construction manager for the construction of the new South Norwalk Elementary School to accept the guaranteed maximum price in an amount not to exceed fifty-one million eight hundred thirty thousand six hundred and eleven dollars, account number noted. Seven D one C, authorize building management to issue change orders on contract for a total not to exceed two million five hundred thousand dollars, account number noted. And I believe that concludes consent count. I need a motion to accept the consent calendar? Okay, C. All in favor of of the consent calendar as read? Does that mean all right? That's unanimous, Mayor. Jen, did you have a que- oh?
I believe that brings us to item seven C four A, Mister Frayer.
Uh I or authorize the mayor, um well authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an agreement uh with Waters Construction Company, T M P twenty twenty-three dash two East Wall Street Land Square Safety Accessibility and Streetscape State Project Number L one oh two zero 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 four for an amount not to exceed two thou- two million sixty-one thousand eighty dollars and eighty-nine cents, accounts noted. And I'd like to also
Four B with that, yes.
Yes, I was going to move four B with it's authorize the Director of Transportation Mobility and Parking to execute orders on contract with Waters Construction Company, T M P twenty twenty-three dash two East Wall Street. Uh Landmark Square Safety Accessibility and Landscape um State Project Number uh L one oh two zero 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 four for an amount not to exceed two hundred and six thousand one hundred dollars and nine cents. Um I'd like to uh get a second on that, and I would also like to make a comment on it.
Go ahead, Mister Frayer. You have the floor, floor.
Um this is uh again, one of those steps that were long awaited. Uh this is the beginning of a twenty-seven million dollar project um that we've been looking forward to for for many years now. Um and I'd like to just turn it over to uh Mister Travers, if you can talk about this and just explain a little bit more about it.
Is sure, Travers?
Sure, thank you. Uh so this is, uh sorry, I think this really stems back um you know, a number of years and uh really uh comes from our first community meeting uh on Wall Street and uh where I think we heard frustration from a community that uh was looking for, you know, and change uh you you within their community, and we made a commitment that we were going to start it as soon as possible. Um we didn't have funding at that time, uh but we had a vision and we had a mayor that supports uh the you you movement uh in this direction and a council uh you know, that is engaged. Um so we are delivering on phase one. Uh so this is the section of uh Wall Street between Brooks and Main. Uh there will be uh we're uh in installate- installing a uh mid-block crosswalk uh that that'll be there. Uh the streetscape will start, this will start, uh this will be all of the portions that that'll actually will be built on as it continues up, uh but we uh have com- we're at thirty percent for the rest of the project, uh thirty percent design plans, right? Uh so we plan to uh do a groundbreaking from this and simultaneously followed by a um uh another public meeting to keep the cup- the the community uh informed about the progress that we're doing, uh the direction we're going. Uh we uh have met with F H W A, who's one of the fender funders, uh and uh as well as uh the Department of Transportation uh and you know, working through some of the logistics of the next rounds of funding. Uh but this funding was provided by a local transportation improvement project, uh a program project uh that is uh out of the D O T. So we are very excited to start wa- phase one and looking forward to phase one leads into phase two, phase three uh and 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 so on until we are complete. So happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mister Travers. Are there any questions or comments relative to this item? Mister Air, uh I'm sorry, Mister Seed.
Hi, um yeah, I know Nicole, she probably, she's going through time, but I know District A, we're really excited about all of the things that are happening. Um I know Nicole and I met with um Jim and Garrett on last week. Um got to talk about this project and other projects, and I'm really excited about the things that's happening in um in District A, especially in Wall Street. Um this is something that it's been promised for, I think, seventy years now that um Wall Street was going to be um upgraded. Um but right now, it's actually going to happen. So I know a lot of people are are excited. The business owners um as well as the residents, I'm really excited. Um just wanted to give kudos to um everybody at T M P, especially Jim McGarrett. Um since day one, um they walked the streets of Norwalk. Um and Wall Street was an area that they really wanted to focus on, and I'm really happy and excited um that this promise is being fulfilled to um the residents um in that area that I promised them for a long time, but we're actually getting that going. So uh thank you, um Jim McGarrett.
Thank you, Mister Seed. Uh Mister Goldstein?
I I couldn't agree more. I I think that one of the really important um points to hit on, and I think Jalen, you know, spoke to this, is they've done the work in terms of getting community involvement, community approval, and a lot of the work that's going to come as a result of this project is, I think, in the guise of and in the spirit of spirit of a lot of the complete streets work that we're also doing. So while we, you know, talk about complete streets and as we talk about it more in the in the future months, um Jim and Garrett and the T M P team are really going to be walking the walk here. And we're really excited for what they're going to do. I think it's going to really improve the quality of Wall Street in the area, and it's going to make it one of um even more desirable area in the city, and I am very, very, very excited for what they're going to do.
Thank you, Mister Goldstein. Any uh Miss McMur?
Thank you, Mayor. I will keep this brief because I don't want to keep us all here all night. Um if you want something done right, call Jim and Garrett. Um just really lucky to have them um working for us, and I think they do an amazing job, and um I think Mister Seed said it, like, we've been waiting for this for seventy years. Um they're delivering, and we really appreciate that. So thank you.
Thank you, Miss McMur. Any further comments? Mister Frayer?
Uh yeah, I I well, I'm always astounded every time I see one of these projects coming up from the T M P gang uh that the the amount of uh funding that these guys secure for the city is just just astounding. And so uh my hat is really off to uh to Jim and the rest of your team. And so uh, my hat is really off to uh, to Jim and the rest of your team.
Any further comments or discussion? This is the Juleski Eichner.
Just super briefly, I was patronizing one of the fabulous restaurants on Wall Street. Shout out to everyone who should be doing so and had a um, literal moment of being like, oh, this is why we're doing this work, as I was trying to navigate getting out of the parking garage to get to the restaurant I wanted. Anyway, I just want to thank everyone. It will make life so much easier for the businesses, for all of us who who really want to support and and enjoy what Wall Street has to offer. I'm super excited about these projects and really appreciate the work that um, Jim and Garrett and the team are putting in on this. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Further comments? Ms. Nicole Ayers. I think you're on mute if you're speaking.
I hit it by accident, sorry.
And you you started speaking and you're struggling as it is. Oh, I'm sorry, you didn't want to comment, Ms. Ayers?
I raised my hand by accident, sorry.
Thank you. Uh, any further comment? You know, I I too want to thank uh, Mr. Travers and Mr. Valella, uh, and and you know, this is uh, just an example of real teamwork, not only with the council that we have, but our departments, uh, but also the federal, state, and local governments who are all combining to make this happen. As Mr. Seed had mentioned, it's been seventy years that this area has pretty much been neglected. And I want to say that with this council, with this administration, it's finally something is getting done, and I appreciate all the hard work that went into this. So uh, if there are no further comments, I would like to take a vote. All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Next item is item seven C six, Mr. Frayer.
It says W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments, amendments thereto as may be necessary for the city of Norwalk to receive grants in the amount of three hundred and twenty two thousand dollars from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and its Long Island Sound Futures Fund Grant Program for the project planning to improve resiliency, habitat, and public access at Veterans Park. And I want to include the next one on this is authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute any and all agreements, documents, instruments there, amendments thereto as may be necessary for the city of Norwalk to receive grant funds in the amount of five hundred and two thousand seven hundred dollars from the National Fish and Wildlife Foundation and its National Coastal Resilience Fund Grant Program for the project planned development for flood resilience using salt marsh rehabilitation and green uh, um, infrastructure. I'd like to move this item and also just say a few words.
You have the floor.
Um, it gets, it really gets me very excited to see particularly this uh, second uh, item number seven, which is the salt marsh uh, rehabilitation. This brings me back to my days when I was uh, worked on the uh, Save the Sound, and we uh, did quite a bit of work in 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 a new technology which was refreshing salt marsh or doing salt marsh restoration. A lot of people didn't think it could be done. Uh, but now it's it's almost a a very uh, normal thing to do. Um, and it's gonna be a beautiful uh, uh, salt marsh restoration right behind the um, uh, where the uh, in 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 view of probably our new uh, uh, South Norwalk School. Um, I'd like to get uh, Mrs. uh, Ms. Surchetti, uh, maybe she could talk a little bit about this, and she was so uh, so uh, involved in getting the um, the grants.
Mr. Chetty.
Uh, good evening. Uh, good to see you all. Um, so yes, we received two grants. They're both designed, they're they're both grants to fund design for two different projects. The first one is at Bets Park, and it stems from a collaborative collaborative project that has started um, now that the um, Maritime Aquarium received a grant to do a feasibility study of the offshore area of Bets Park, and we uh, have jumped from that to looking at the entire park um, and really kind of reframing our uh, our our coastal parks as uh, opportunities and assets to um, to look at um, excuse me, climate change and sea level rise and increased coastal resilience. Sorry. Um, uh, so uh, that's the first grant is uh, kind of a revitalization uh, for both our residents and for the uh, Long Island Sound Habitat of uh, Bets Park. And then the the second that you mentioned is um, proximal to the new South Norwalk School. That project uh, uh, design idea stemmed from uh, conversations within city departments, and that includes um, the Public Works Department and uh, the Planning and Zoning uh, Department, my department. Um, as we listened to the evolution of the uh, South Norwalk School um, being at that location, we saw an opportunity to get grant funds to install um, green infrastructure. Green infrastructure is green uh, trees and other green things that um, you you utilize to um, improve and capture stormwater and therefore reduce flooding. And we took that a step further and looked at where that stormwater discharges to uh, our salt marsh that's um, behind the uh, industrial uh, complexes at um, on Meadow Street. And um, proposed to look into designs at to rehabilitating that wetland um, or or, you know, salt marsh. Um, so that's what we're proposing to do. It's a lot of uh, a lot of green, but I think it will bring a lot of um, good things to both both of those areas. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chertie. Uh, Mr. Frayer, any other further comments or any other council member? No, this the Jelski Eichner.
I just wanted to very briefly um, thank everyone involved in this, Alexis for leading the charge, um, but Ms. Valderez, um, Mr. Travers. You know, the South Norwalk School is such an opportunity for the city um, to really do right by our students, to really do right by our community, and I am just so grateful for the way that everyone has sort of jumped in on the challenge there to figure out how we can best maximize um, what we're offering our students and and rethinking how we can support that area um, to make sure that it is um, environmentally um, a terrific place for our students and for the families uh, that live in that area. So I'm really excited about this grant and grateful for all the work going in there.
And thank you. Any further comments, discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Next, that brings us to item seven C eight, Mr. Frayer.
Uh, to authorize the purchasing agent to authorize a sole source purchase order to assess to asset works for the purchase of twelve dual electric charger forty amp units for some not to exceed a hundred and twenty five thousand dollars. Accounts noted. This is um, a great step forward, I think, for the city. Um, these are um, charging stations for um, the uh, growing fleet of the city's uh, uh, electronic vehicles. And we have um, Ms. uh, Val- Valderez here to um, to explain a little bit more about the details of it. It's really exciting.
Okay.
And do we need a motion first, so?
Uh, he, Mr. Frayer's moved it, so Ms. Valderez.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Um, so what we are requesting approval is to buy uh, this what we call behind-the-fence EV charger units. Um, so these units will not gonna be open to the public, but will be to be able to fuel electric fuel our own fleet. Um, so as you guys remember, we ended up having our full electrical vehicle purchased at the end of last year. Um, so this is to move forward to be able to continue to change our fleet uh, to electric one. Uh, the idea is to install these units some at City Hall where we're gonna ha- where we have some of our fleet at operations at South South Smith Street and also uh, at the police headquarters. Um, this is, this is what we're seeing in front of you is just the units itself. And the reason why it is a sole source is that we are buying from the vendor that has the software platform that we already use for all the maintenance of our regular fleet. Um, is with the use of this platform that we can control any oil changes that we do in the cars, any maintenance, and the most important also when the cars come to get fuel at our regular pumps, we can control that. So this is really pretty much, let's say, the electrical unit version of our new pumps, and we need to have that system talking to the existing. Um, you're gonna see hopefully in the next month um, that we're gonna come in front of you for approval of what we're gonna call the open to the public units as well as the contractor that will be installing the infrastructure so we can have the units installed.
Thank you, Ms. Valderez. Any further comments or discussion? Ms. Smith?
Um, yes, I I just want to comment um, how excited I am to see this moving forward. Um, thank Vanessa and the whole Public Works Department for, you know, ushering this in. Um, you know, electric vehicles are so important to uh, to the city, to those of us on the council. Uh, you know, we've been talking about this for quite some time, but we can't really move forward with that plan without the infrastructure, and so this is uh, what has been needed. Um, and I just want to commend again uh, Vanessa and the Public Works Department, and thank you for um, ushering this in.
Thank you. Mr. Juleski Eichner.
I've had too much to say tonight. I just want to echo um, Councilmember Smith. This is so exciting. I'm thrilled about the step that we're taking here, very much looking forward to what this means for the city, very grateful for the work. I know how complicated this has been to figure out and really grateful that you all have um, have done this, and we're looking forward to seeing them.
Any further comments or discussions? This is one of several items on the agenda tonight that uh, is in keeping with our goal of making Norwalk the greenest city in the state of Connecticut. And I think the city of Norwalk is so blessed to have a council that and and a de- a department staff that uh, is moving in that direction with such enthusiasm and such energy. And again, uh, I want to thank everybody for making this happen. So all in favor of approving this item? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. I think that brings us to item seven D one A, Ms. Smith.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Um, approve to reject construction bid from Sean's Lawns Inc. For site work for the proposed South Norwalk Elementary School project and proceed with the award to the next lowest responsible bidder. I would like to move that item, Mayor, and speak to it if I may.
You have the floor.
Thank you. Um, I'd like to begin by just stating that this item passed unanimously in the uh, the February seventh land use and building management uh, committee meeting. Um, uh, just a little bit of history. In twenty seventeen, Sean's Lawns uh, was cited for not being in compliance with Norwalk's zoning regulations. Um, they were operating a contractor's yard without a permit. Um, so they were cited at that time, and um, although they did in twenty nineteen, two years later, apply for special permit, they did not at that time rec- re um, comply with those requirements. Um, additionally, at that time, an environmental violation was found that they were uh, not uh, in compliance with the Aqua Fire Protection Act. Um, and so uh, here's uh, nearly seven years later, they are still out of compliance with Norwalk's uh, zoning and conservation regulations and City Ordinance Chapter nineteen bidding and purchasing, which states that the city has the right to reject any and or all bids and or bidders as it may be considered to be in the best interest or when it is determined that the public interest would be served by doing so. This ordinance was written to assure city business is conducted with companies that comply comply with our regulations and laws. Um, we did receive, the co- common council did receive a letter from um, Attorney Enrico Constantini on behalf of his client Sean Wendell, and we did hear from Attorney Constantini tonight during public comment along with Nick Wendell, um, assuming that's a family member as well. Um, with um, you know, request for an extension to bring the company into compliance. And um, I I would just like to state, you know, how much I appreciate uh, those efforts. Um, and you know, he, you did state that um, Mr. um, Wendell was sick with COVID, um, but it is important to point out that those violations predated COVID by several years. Um, I um, I also want to point out that this new South Norwalk School is a very long anticipated um, project for the city. Probably the most important project we have embarked on in a very long time. Uh, the community needs this, and and we can't really look at anything that is going to cause um, any delays with that project. So I'd just like to say that I wish Mr. Wendell the very best of health. Um, and I really do look forward to uh, Mr. Wendell bringing the uh, company into compliance with our city codes um, and regulations, and um, and I know that, you know, you're saying that you really want to be, you know, good citizens, and I believe that you will do that, and so I look forward to you bidding on future projects. Um, but um, I do feel that um, you know, we need to um, be thinking about, you know, uh, about this project and compliance with our our regulations.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Any further comments? Seeing none. All in favor of approving item seven D one A? Opposed? Abstentions? Mr. Wiggins abstains. Others are in uh, uh, in favor. Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, items, uh, Ms. Smith, item seven D two A, two B, two C, and two D.
Yes, thank you. Uh, two A, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an amendment to the agreement with Gilbane Building Company as a construction manager for the Norwalk High School project, state project number one O three dash zero two six three N to accept the guaranteed maximum price G M P number one, proposal for an amount not to exceed two hundred nineteen million five hundred ninety four thousand six hundred twenty dollars, account number noted. Two B, authorize building management to issue change orders on G M P number one on contract for the total not to exceed three million three hundred fifty thousand dollars funded by the owner's contingency, account number noted. Two C, authorize the mayor Harry W. Rilling to execute an amendment to the agreement with Gilbane Building Company as a construction manager for the Norwalk High School project non-state funding to accept the guaranteed maximum price G M P number two, proposal for an amount not to exceed three million seven hundred thirty thousand nine hundred eighty two dollars, account number noted. And two D, authorize building management to issue change orders on G M P number two on contract for a total not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars funded by the owner's contingency, account number noted. Um, I would like to move those items and say a few words.
I believe Ms. Dunn, uh, was Ms. Dunn going to recuse herself? I got information.
Um, yes, or abstain, whichever is better for you guys.
Whichever you feel more comfortable. If you feel there's a conflict, you should recuse. Uh, if not, then certainly you can abstain.
I I work at Norwalk High School, so you know, I've
It's probably better if you recuse.
Yeah, and by the way, uh, recuses are not only for for conflicts, but also for appearance of conflict, even where there is not an actual conflict. So certainly it's a the better course of action and the conservative approach to take.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Ms. Smith?
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, um, and and another big project for this city. Uh, tonight, what we are looking at is approving um, the the contract, and this is one contract. It's separate, and we have Alan Lowe here with us as well as Amar Shamas from Gilbane to uh, talk more extensively about the project. Um, but uh, we have state funding as well as the uh, non-state funding. Um, and this uh, represents two hundred twenty, if my math is correct, two hundred twenty six million seven hundred seventy five dollars, six hundred two dollars of a total uh, budget of two hundred thirty nine million dollars. Um, and you know, Gilbane has been uh, working very hard on this project. We have our guaranteed maximum prices. Um, and so I would just like to go ahead and turn it over to um, Alan Lowe. Uh, if anyone has any co- comments or questions, um, he is here to answer them.
Mr. Lowe?
Uh, good evening, everybody. Excuse me. Um, I just want to quickly, I just want to mention to a a schedule for this project. This project is gonna take about five years for construction. So for the next three years, three and three plus years, we're gonna work on building a new So for the next three years, three, three plus years, we're going to work on building a new building and the existing athletic view. And after that, where kids will move into the new building. And then thereafter, we will demolish existing building and, and build a big parking lot in the middle of it. And then construction of all the athletic facility thereafter. Again, so this project is scheduled to finish in fall of two, two thousand twenty-eight. So just for your perspective, it's a very long project. This is probably the biggest project the city ever encountered. It's, you know, over two hundred, whatever million dollars it is. And we are, we are getting eighty percent reimbursement from the state. And, and certain parts of this project, certain element of it, we haven't bid out yet. The reason being is like for like building demolition. It's not, it's very difficult to bid it now because those pricing are not available yet because we are do, we are doing the construction about three years from now. So we're bidding some other stuff, including furniture and fixtures and stuff like that in about two years. So, so this project is still, there's still a lot of effort behind it in terms of getting, getting the final cost of this project. But we are just speaking, uh, uh, right there, and we, we probably go approach the state for some additional funding. Just to balance, balance, balance the, the, adjust, justify the budget amount in about two years.
Thank you, Mr. Lowe. Further, or you have any questions of Mr. Lowe or any comments? Or questions of Mr. Gilbane or any comments? Oh, Mr. Shamas, I'm sorry. I thought your name was Shamas Gilbane. No, sorry.
No, we're very excited about the project. We thank the City of Norwalk for picking us for this. This project is very special to us, very special to myself. I worked in Norwalk High School, I was in, back in two thousand and three to two thousand and nine, worked with Alan very closely. So you guys are fantastic client of ours, and we're happy to see where we are after two and a half years of great effort on the entire team, Castle Booze, Alan and his staff, C S G, and it's been great to see us finally get to that point, and we're excited to get started.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Ms. Smith?
Yeah, just a, a final comment. You know, this really is an exciting project, particularly with the eighty percent reimbursement from the state. You know, it's, I don't know that we could do it otherwise. And this is the kind of project that really can be transformative for the City of Norwalk. And glad to see that we're here and moving forward with it.
Thank you, and certainly kudos to Senator Duff, who arranged, with his position, was able to secure that eighty percent reimbursement when in the past, the City of Norwalk was recently getting somewhere around thirty to thirty-two percent reimbursement. And now for twenty-five years, thankfully for his efforts, we get a sixty percent reimbursement on all other school projects for the next twenty-five years. So we're excited about that. And I also want to say that we've had wonderful experience with Gilbane, so we're very pleased to have them on board. If there are no further comments or discussion, I will call for a vote, all in favor. Opposed? Abstentions? So we have all in favor, and we have, if you'll note, Ms. Dixon, a recusal on the part of Ms. Dunn. I believe that's all that comes before the council. Ms. Shanahan, are you?
Motion to adjourn, Mayor.
Ah, motion to adjourn, what a surprise. It is eight thirty, do I have, are all in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? We are adjourned. Thank you, council people, and thank you for your time and effort this evening.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.